At this point, we're back in open session. So the next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment? There's no public comments. We move on to changes to the agenda. Does any board member have any proposed changes to the agenda? If not, then we move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. So I have two items on the superintendent's report. One is the Title I District Plan, and it's actually listed below on the consent agenda. But this is a, essentially, it's really an accountability piece, a transparency piece. So we've been writing a Title I grant proposal for a number of years. It's one of Merrill's responsibilities. It's to receive federal funds that are directly linked to low-income students. The idea is the funds don't automatically get tied directly to students, that the federal monies are made available to us because we have students who are low-income, who may or may not need additional supports and services. And so really, this whole Title I plan is really a very nice overview of kind of the program's supports and services that are in the district. But it's really a requirement for us. It's a requirement for the board to formally approve it before Merrill can continue to write the Title I grant. So I wanted to share with the Title I District Plan. Hopefully, it's information that you know. It's kind of a nice succinct overview of the many, as I said, support services and educational opportunities that our students have. But I wanted to just point it out to you and then point out to you that it's in the consent agenda. But at this time, if there's any, like, even comments or questions about it, I'm happy to answer that. Or for some reason, we want it pulled off the consent agenda. But there is a kind of a timeliness factor for Merrill and Summer Grant Writing for that.
We, I think it was mentioned in the agenda, it kind of sounds like, what, we need the board approval, and then you were expecting rapid approval on whoever it's getting submitted to. I'm just wondering, do these ever come back with, like, questions or notes or anything along those lines?
Yeah, so there's a process that links through the State Board of Ed, and so they have Title I specific approvers on the State Board of Ed Committee that looks at this. There are, oftentimes, it's sort of a minor, somewhat maybe even tedious detail, wording or a language change. So they do expect a very specific way that these grants are written, specific to all the requirements around them. And there are a lot of requirements, Merrill's very familiar with those.
This particular piece is a new piece. So it's preceding the actual grant writing, whereas before, a lot of this information is in the grant itself, but you didn't submit the plan in advance of writing the grant. So I've already had the plan submitted to our state rep for review before I gave it to you, to be sure that it wouldn't be kicked back once I got board approval. So she has already kicked it back to me once to make some adjustments. So what you're seeing, she anticipates once it has board approval, it will just go to the next step. They'll put this plan, then they'll open up the grant for me to actually write it.
Are there other deadlines around this specific that we're looking ahead?
Yeah. So, and Merrill, you're...
Yeah, so I can speak to that, too. They open up the grant typically about now. Usually July 1st is about the timing when you can start to write it. Because we want to expend funds right at the beginning of the school year, I like to get the grant submitted by July 15th to the state because that way I have time to get the approval so that we can put the funds into motion prior to the start of the school year. You can't expend anything until you have final grant approval. And we allocate our dollars to a reading specialist at Central, as well as our kindergarten intervention program, most of our dollars. And so we cannot go ahead and cut any kind of payroll check to that reading specialist or rehire our kindergarten intervention until we have that. So that's the time factor.
Okay.
Any other thoughts about that? Questions about that? The other thing, I just wanted to share, just a very nice note from the Riverside Junior Women's Charity. They had reached out to us and were interested in spending some of their philanthropic dollars around with the school district and provide us with a check for $400 to address field trips or school supplies for students that may present those needs. So I just wanted to thank them for the note and make sure that you are all aware of that. And that is it.
All right. Thanks, Martha. We next move on to the consent agenda. So at this point, could the board secretary please read the agenda items?
That's just everything under G, correct?
Yes, correct.
The utilization of a consent agenda should not limit the board's ability to make district issues as to... The items? I'm not that organized. Help me out. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the non...
It's okay.
The minute, the consent agenda includes the minutes of the previous meetings...
And then the list of dates?
Which includes May 17th, closed session, the May 17th regular business meeting, the regular, the minutes of the May 23rd closed session, the May 23rd special meeting, and the minutes of the June 7th committee of the whole meeting.
And keep reading personnel report?
Then the personnel report, the payables pre-list as of May 31st, 2017, the payables pre-list as of June 21st, 2017, then also the prevailing rate of wages effective June 5th, 2017, and the Title I District Plan.
Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to have taken off for further discussion? If there are none, then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next up, we have the Riverside Educational Council. Are there any comments from the Riverside Educational Council? If there are none, we move on to board member comments. Are there any, would any board member like to comment on any activities that they attended or any...
Nothing feels out.
All right. Now, I'm...
I will say that I met with superintendent, we did a tour of Ames, and definitely enjoyed my time there. Also met with Bill, the, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the title.
Bill Rakey?
Yeah.
Bill Rakey.
Bill Rakey, and definitely enjoyed the trip there. Got a better idea in terms of, you know, the new property that we've acquired, what the ideas were for a potential expansion. And I definitely appreciate everybody's time for that visit.
If there are no other comments, we next move to the committee reports. Rich is absent tonight, so we'll move directly to the policy committee, which is Dan.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Sherry, did you have any reports on the education committee?
Yes, mentioned what was talked about at the last COW on June 7th. You know, there's no way we could really appreciate every child and what they do, but we did have a chance to get a peek at a few of some students and to recognize their amazing achievements and skills. We did a salute and a recognition for them, and we're so thankful for all the families that came. We had a presentation on the Positive Behavioral Support System and everything that's going on in the buildings and how they progress. Things are changing. We also heard from Ms. Brownlow and Bill House regarding year-two recommendations for para and teacher evaluations. And we had a K-8 math implementation update. So it was extremely comprehensive. We're hoping, if you didn't have a chance to watch, that you go back, and it's a good overview of what's been going on the last year, which is a lot of good changes. So, thanks.
Sure. We next move on to old business. The first item is fiscal year 2017-18 tentative budget presentation. Mr. Sellers, I don't know if you have any thing you'd like to talk about in that regard?
There have been no real substantive changes since a month ago. I've had the opportunity to go over the budget material with Robert Holmes. I invite you to send any questions about the materials. We have some overview information, some narrative in that. This is the same as was distributed to board members last month with justification statements in the same order as the general ledger. All of the general ledger for the educational and operations and maintenance fund, including historical columns going back to 1314. This is the official district budget form, and this is what is being requested that the board authorized tonight to go on public display. And this is the resolution that needs to be voted on and signed. And with your approval, it'll go on display. I think I mentioned before that the tentative budget is not in any way a lock on any aspect of the budget. So between now and the adoption in September, you have full latitude for any further changes that might be seen as necessary. I'm going to be working with Robert Holmes one more time on Friday, June 30th. And so I invite you to email any questions that you have that might involve my input. On July 1, you'll be working with Robert, and he'll be answering your questions. I think I'll try and explain to him where all the numbers came from, how, you know, what kinds of calculations and estimations and, you know, based upon the actual financial activity. I guess at this time, I'd like to also mention that in your information items regarding the current year, coming about, coming out to be where we expected a balance of revenues minus expenditures of $2.008 million. As of today, and examining the last payroll, which was just finalized yesterday, we're looking at about $2.225 million. Major caveat with that is finalizing property taxes, and the independent auditor will be making some decisions about how property taxes are divided among fiscal years. So there can be some, you know, there's discussion with the auditor about that, and at the end of the day, he's supposed to take 51% of the 2016, and then all the other receipts from prior tax years and reflect them in the 2016-17 fiscal year. But I'm just saying that because it looks like we're spot-on as far as our expectations, but that doesn't mean that after the auditor has done doing the auditing work, that we won't have a variance that, you know, might be considered significant.
Do you tell us the timeline?
I'm sorry.
I close and would invite any questions based on materials that were distributed to board members for this meeting.
David, for the auditor, what's the timeline for them to finish recommendations or changes?
The audit is due on October 15th, but I would say more than 50% of the time, due to whatever circumstances, including, you know, time, you know, communications with the auditor, there's usually a 30-day extension to November 15th. So I'm pretty confident that November 15th would be for sure our audit would be finalized, including all accruals. Now, we were on, we had adverse opinion, cash basis, non-GASB compliant as Government Alcom Standards Board in 2012-13. In 2013-14, we audited with partial movement to GASB compliance in 2014-15. We're fully compliant with GASB and on a modified rule, where we're basically best practices as of right now. And there's been some timing adjustments as to how property taxes are accrued, but hopefully, this will be a year that, once the audit is finalized, it'll make it clearer exactly how property taxes are going to be divided. I'm pretty confident that it's just going to take 51% of the current tax year and then all the others. That's a normal way of approaching that.
Thank you.
So November 15th is the short answer to your question.
Any other questions for Mr. Sars? Tendative budget? If not, thank you very much for that presentation. Also, thanks for working with Mr. Holmes, getting him up to speed on this, on our budget. Appreciate that. Next item is the, is there a motion to, for the Board of Education to approve the fiscal year 2017-18 tentative budget resolution as presented?
So moved.
Is there any discussion about the, this resolution?
Only that we had had a talk, you know, a month or so ago about various purchases or services, and that we would maybe be able to hear some details about that. So before we finalize, we're going to make sure it's what we all agree on.
If I have the final...
Yeah, the final one, that we make sure that, you know, Martha's going to be getting that to us, and I'm sure she will. So, thanks.
Any other comments? If not, Margie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is, we had, I think, the last... This is a meeting of the board. We had a question about some of the musical instruments, and the administration has provided some explanation about that. So at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the purchase of the musical instruments with the justification as presented? So moved. Is there any discussion about the, these justifications for the musical instruments?
Only that I do think it's important we keep some instruments for those that, you know, it's such an expensive item that I don't think it's a bad thing to do, to give them a chance to play. So, yeah.
And I'll just add, thank you for your... This was one of those items that was in the capital-outlay budget where there were some questions about what was this and why. And so Jim Colombo, our band director, I think, put together a really nice overview for everybody to gain some additional understanding.
Very helpful to see that. Appreciate you doing that. If there are other questions or comments, then Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We next come to intergovernmental agreements between West 40 and Riverside District 96 Board of Education. At this time, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the intergovernmental agreements between West 40 and District 96 Board of Education for the 2016-17 and 2017-18 as presented?
So moved.
Second. Martha, did you want to say a few words about this agreement, just so that everyone's clear about exactly what it's about?
Sure. So this agreement really gives us an opportunity to utilize the services of the West 40 Regional Safe School Program. The reason that there are two agreements is we actually have utilized those services, and we utilize those services in what's the 16-17 school year and anticipate the 17-18 school year. It's, it's relatively probably an agreement we should think about signing annually, and that sometimes we are going to use these services, and many, many years, I'm sure we haven't. So, but it is nice to have regionally an opportunity to have a service like this that would be a difficult service for a single district to provide all on its own.
Thanks, Martha. Are there any questions about this, this agreement?
I have a question. I was noticing... So this is just for, for us to utilize our services, because I was noticing there's like really no timeframe on this.
Right. So if one is for this, they talk about the 16-17 school year or year, really, and then the 17-18 year. So it's not a specific student agreement. It's really a general sort of, if we need your services, they're available to us because we are one of the districts in the West 40 Cook County school districts.
Any other questions about these agreements or any comments? If not, Margie, would please call the roll?
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, Margie, we next come to the non-union salary recommendations for 2017-18. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the non-union salary recommendation for 2017-2018 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Does anyone have any comments about these salary recommendations? No comments or questions, then Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Just a note for the public, the average increase was 2.8%. It's the average across the board. Next item was the Metro Chicago Mathematics Initiative contract. So at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the Metro Chicago Mathematics Initiative contract as presented?
So moved.
Second. Martha, would you want to say a few words about this contract, so...
Sure. And Merrill, feel free to chime in on this, but this is a service that I'm familiar with having also used it in a prior district. So it's really a contract to provide professional development for our teachers in the area of mathematics instruction. We have some mathematics professional development that's linked directly to the curriculum resources that we've chosen, the Math in Focus, as well as the Carnegie Math. This particular agreement is to provide what we call job-embedded professional development. Coaching is another word that's often used for this. It's really an opportunity to sit with real teachers in real time, to really discuss with them how the different mathematical strategies, as well as their resources, are working for students, and to kind of have that non-evaluative opportunity for teachers to really get that feedback around, have you tried this? Might you want to do this differently? What about this group of students? That kind of thing. So a lot of kind of literature around professional development really talks about this as a really important way of delivering professional development to teachers. Again, as I said, it's kind of that real-time, real-place, and real kids. So we're excited to have the opportunity to work with Metro Chicago Mathematics Initiative. They've done a lot of work through West 40. Merrill's familiar with them, some of our teachers. We've already done some of the, what I call workshop model professional development. This is a way to kind of do a more customized, personalized approach. And the plan is to do it with third and fourth, or fourth and fifth, third, fourth and fifth. Yeah.
And intermediate grade levels. As a, it's also got a lesson-study component, which there's a lot of recent research out there, especially out of Japan, around lesson study and the impact on student learning. And so they're going, we have anchor, what we would call anchor teachers from each of those grade levels that will work individually with the coach and go through two cycles of coaching. And then we will bring in the whole entire grade level to be a part of the lesson study for two to three more cycles where they would be watching their peer and talking about implementation and feedback around mathematics instruction. It's not an addition to the professional development budget that we've had. I've rearranged dollars, so it's a shift from more content support to more instructional strategy and instructional delivery. It uses protocols that are pretty specific. It's called a true model. I can certainly share the protocols with the board if you wanted to see those models. But it is, it's a very systems-based approach to talking about teaching and learning in a really authentic, real-time kind of way.
What's the basic idea? I mean, what's like, what's a prototypical example of the kind of stuff that...
So what would happen is, it's a coaching model where they come in and they plan with a particular teacher around a particular lesson sequence. They deliver that, the coach observes, and just like an administrator would, but looks at for specific goals or outcomes that they are addressing. It might be the way students are engaging with the learning. It may be the type of conceptual models that the teacher wants to get across to the children. It may be the way children engage in talking about their mathematical thinking. So their outcomes are pre-identified between the coach and the teacher. They go through that experience. The coach then provides feedback and debriefs with the teacher, and they make a plan for next steps to execute an instruction. And then the coach comes back to look at how those next steps have been implemented. After they go through a couple of those cycles, then they do that same experience with the entire grade level, observing the lesson and taking feedback and notes, and then working through a conversation where they share what they observed with respect to student learning. It's focused on what students are doing, more so than what teachers are doing. It's really, you're trying to change teaching practices and improve practices by looking at what students are doing, which is a very different lens than like a teacher evaluation observation, you know, which tends to be more about the teacher behavior. This is really more about the student behavior and how students are responding to that instruction. So then you do what's called a lesson study with everybody watching and everybody debriefing and looking for specific student behaviors in the instruction and how the students are responding. And then they debrief around that, and they all have a conversation about how it translates to their own practices in each of their individual classrooms. So...
I have a question about this one right here that mentions an economical savings compared to HMH.
So if I were to pursue this type of job-embedded coaching through the vendor of the program that we purchased, it's double the cost per day versus what MCMI offers. And MCMI, because of their expertise in mathematics, can really work with any content, and the coach that we would partner with is actually very familiar with the Math in Focus materials that we're using. And that was intentional on our part when we were vetting sort of who would, who would it be that we would want to work with our teachers. So they aren't content-specific. I could enter in a similar kind of professional development model with the Math in Focus professional development team at double the cost per day. So I didn't have the budget to really increase and go that route necessarily. Then you're paying for a lot more travel, lodging, all those other things in your cost.
I guess, yeah, that was another point. I think you mentioned that it was local, so I assume there's no travel or anything like that.
Correct. It's just flat rate.
Okay. Great.
If not, Margie, would you please call the roll? We already read the motion, do we not?
Yeah.
Do that, yes.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is the non-action item. It's the website content management solution provider. I don't know if, Martha, you wanted to say a few words about this item?
Sure. And Don, Don can say more. So this was actually already a budgeted item. It's something that's been kind of on the to-do list for a little while. I think quite honestly, perhaps there's been some frustration around our website. The design is really nice. The functionality at different times is varied, I know varied for us particularly in-house. So this has been on the list of goals for the technology department to look at a new website hosting solution. And the recommendation is to move forward with Ed Leo. And Don, I'm going to let you jump in and talk a little bit about Ed Leo, if you want to do that, and the information that's in the memo here.
Sure. We evaluated a number of systems that were kind of common in the marketplace. The SDO is used over 5,000 school districts throughout the country. It's used locally within Illinois, over a dozen school districts in Illinois. It just really provided just a stable platform, which we can be consistent in how its pages are managed, maintained, will have more flexibility in terms of editing and development of it. And again, the big component was not only the stability, but ADA compliance, the SDA compliance features built into it. It'll self-analyze the site. Even when anyone is hosting, it does a check on the information that's being posted to check it for ADA compliance. It'll have to translate the features, it'll be able to translate to multiple languages. And those are some features that we just didn't have with our WordPress site hosted on GoDaddy. Increasingly, with some of the performance issues we were having, GoDaddy really wanted to move us to our own private server. Right now, we were on a shared service, so that would increase costs. So it was a good time also then to really just evaluate other solutions.
What exactly is ADA compliance with regards to a website?
Well, it's the American Disabilities Act. Websites need to be able to be read by individuals with disabilities. So if somebody, for instance, has an issue with site, it needs to be able to be read back to them based on the tools that they might have on their device. And so in posting the content, we have to be more and more sensitive to it because there is, I mean, there are compliance rules now, and school districts can be and have been fined for not meeting that compliance. So the site itself prides itself on the ADA ratings that it has, and that was one of the criteria that we had in evaluating the various solutions amongst, amongst other things.
I've seen videos with just audio but no visuals, so someone who needs that visual cue wouldn't be able to interpret any of the information. So we need to make sure it's accessible to whoever...
Correct. So if we're posting a picture...
Right.
So if we're posting a picture, there needs to be text to go along with that picture. And so those are some of the built-in features that if somebody goes to post a picture, it's going to say that, because it has no text, that it is not compliant, and it becomes a self-checker.
Or not simply as an audio feed. If we wanted to do a presentation.
Exactly.
Right.
And it can have a visual readout of what that picture is.
Correct. And, you know, from a price standpoint, I mean, we've looked at a number of systems over the years. We've looked at systems in the past that have cost $25,000 to $35,000 annually for the service. This was very competitive, especially relative to the types of services that it can provide. Teachers will also be able to create websites off of this platform. And again, that'll give us that consistency. Right now, we're using a number of third-party tools to host those sites, because it's a greater level of control, and again, consistency across sites.
Is it any training for this website creation, or is it similar to what they're already doing?
It's probably less complex than some of the stuff they're already doing, because it is a very canned product. But we do have the, we can support them from that training level. Currently, when teachers create websites, we're working with them to develop them anyway. We're not going to, over time, we're going to have teachers convert to the new site, move content off. To start, we'll just, we'll have the ability to link to an existing site, and then gradually move content over over the course of the year. We don't want it to be a high-stress item for them. It's just a matter of, over time, we'll get there.
And as we know, I think more and more, I mean, the website becomes the hub of just many, many levels and layers of information that both we use in-house, staff really use as well as the community, so.
And we are going to use it as an opportunity to, with the implementation process with SDO, we're having to go through every menu item, every page. So it'll be also time where we can do some pruning, old content, if we need to move some things around for site navigation. Just, I know we're going to probably add some more navigation menu options, just based on feedback and the types of information that stakeholders are just really wanting to, more easy access to that information.
Any other questions about the new website?
I do, actually. So in terms of the initial implementation, you know, it kind of sounds like it's basically $2,000 for that setup. I mean, is that, what kind of services are they providing for that, or is it more of kind of do it yourself on our behalf?
They're migrating most all of the content. There's some types of content that they don't migrate, but in the end, it'll probably work that they're actually migrating and recreating 90-plus percent of the content on the website. So there's a lot of heavy lifting on that end. The lifting that we're doing is more the, we're having to go through and list every page that we want moved over. So that's, that process is going to take two to three weeks, and then they're going to have, it's going to take several weeks for them to move the content over. They're already in the process of doing mockups of our existing sites, based on the information that they have currently. So we can, over the course of the implementation, there'll be several check-ins. We'll be able to see how the site's coming along, and then make adjustments as needed.
Can we talk with the building principals, because each, you know, each school has their own separate page, just about, hey, this, I really want this, or this doesn't work.
Right, and we're not going to make...
But they need to be different than a district.
Correct. And there's not, their pages are far less complex, and so we're going to, especially since it's summer, routine most all of the content. And then it's easier to take away than to add, especially since they're doing that work of putting it there. We can always trim it back and make adjustments after that as needed.
Correct me down, the principals all use a lot of like Facebook, and, you know, particularly link a lot of their school information, photos, that kind of thing.
Correct.
This is sort of an easier linkage to some of the social media?
Correct. It's integrated with all social media. So principals will be able to post via social media and have it post to the page. They'll also be able to post to the page and have it go to the various social media outlets.
Without doing it four times.
Exactly, exactly. Also, it integrates with our calendar, so that calendar just replicates out to...
That's what I was going to ask, because I know we've had issues with making sure there's consistency, depending on what page you look at, if that it's accurate on that page, no matter where you go.
Yeah, we've invested a lot of time this year on kind of making some adjustments to the calendaring process.
Straight line.
Correct. And we're actually, I don't know if you've noticed already, but the calendar, in past years, had not really been updated until, you know, begin that process after July 1. By July 1, we will have all the calendar items in place for next year. So we're, again, just some process changes.
And that's where Don has really been at. The helm of that, but I'm looking at Linda, so the parent leadership team had also been really, I think, vocal and helpful around understanding that the way we had calendars configured, and the way you could download them and copy them for home and use them and update them was complicated. And so I think there've been some really nice improvements in that, yeah.
That sounds great.
Topic of conversation that Don.
Did this figure provide a template, or I think you said they've been used over and over again, so?
Well, the nice thing about it, and that's actually was another nice feature, is that the, all of their sites are unique. So even though they have 5,000-plus sites, they don't use that same template again. So we did go through the templates that were available. We did, they have different categories. We did go with the more traditional one, because our site is currently more traditional. We didn't really want to make too many wholesale changes, and have it be a shock to individuals who are, you know, already comfortable navigating the page. I think you'll see from aesthetically, it has some very similar components to our current site, but also some, I think, some nice, the way the news items are presented, the way the calendar is presented. And as we go through the process, and especially as they start putting our branding on the design, there'll be something that we'll be able to share. Without it being public, we'll be able to share it, you know, internally, and see how it's coming along.
In regards as well, you mentioned, with GoDaddy, they were suggesting that we move to a private server or a dedicated server?
Correct.
Are we, was there a similar recommendation here, or?
Well, we actually, with them, we do get that dedicated type service, and we can whitelist. One of the issues was whitelisting our own, or opening up, making access to our website from internally. We have a lot of devices on the network. Consequently, we were being blocked internally, because it was showing up as too many hits out to our site from the same address, and blocking us. So we were, on a monthly basis internally, GoDaddy would block us. So they said the only way to do that and give us more control over our site was to move us into a, on a different type of service, higher level of service, that would whitelist, where we could whitelist our own address. So at that point, with summer coming up, it's like, okay, I know that the number of devices on the network is going to drop, we've got a little bit of time to make a decision, and again, it was, they were pretty much a clear choice in the ones that we did evaluate. And there are some other services integrated with the product that we may also be able to leverage in the future. Right now, we're focusing on getting the websites up and running. So there could be some, there's some value adds in there as well.
Any other questions? Next, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is new business. The first item is a Spanish teacher recommendation for .52 full-time equivalent new position. This is a potential action item in the sense that we have not talked about this in the past, but I believe Martha is recommending that we may wish to vote on it now, because if we decide to do this, it's difficult to hire a teacher with these qualifications on short notice. And so if we decide that this is important, we should, so I'm not going to read the motion, maybe we just discuss it first a little bit, and maybe Martha, you could...
Sure, thank you for the flexibility. So we, just for our new board members too, so our agreement is really that we discuss an item as new business and not vote on it, and then the next month, it would be old business and an action item. So I'm, you know, potentially here proposing that we kind of break our own agreement on this because of timing, and because of kind of the unique timing of school year and personnel decisions. So one of the things we look at when we're looking at scheduling, particularly at the middle schools, you take kind of all of your students and the number of staff, and you look at the averages. And so we know that our staffing plan is pretty much right-sized, even though we graduated our largest eighth-grade class, we know that we had some particularly large, 30 children in the class 32, and I think even up to 34 children in some sections. So it's not just a simple average of how many certified teachers per children, it's really the number of children that go into advanced learning classes, the number of children that choose Spanish or French. And so there's kind of a number of internal shifts and changes. And April May and Kristy Mullin, the principal and assistant principal that have been working on scheduling for a while now, have said that with a .52 FTE of Spanish, they really feel that that gives them the opportunity to create this balance and really aim for this target, what we call a target in our policy, of 26 students in a given class, in a given section. So we had a teacher over the past several years, she happened to teach part-time Spanish and part-time science. That's an unusual combination in terms of teacher certification, teacher licensure. So we went ahead with the staff departures that we had to fill, and the board's already approved us, a math-science teacher, which is a much more typical combination, and then really isolate out the Spanish as kind of its own unique hire. So rather than coming forward and saying we need more of a math teacher, or more of a science teacher, really the balance seemed to be, what we needed is this part-time Spanish teacher. So I do believe this will be a challenging position to fill, partly because it's foreign language, and partly because it's a .52. I've always just, I've already kind of reached out informally to even just the other neighboring districts to see if other smaller districts might have a person to share. I don't have any answers on that yet, and it would have been a little bit premature, but wanting to start to kind of put feelers out there. So April explains this well, but it really, it does relate to this science Spanish teacher no longer being here, and then having a science math person replace the science Spanish and needing the Spanish. So any questions about that?
My only question is, since we were hiring a new science teacher, why didn't we hear about this person then? Because we could, I mean, is it...
Yeah, I don't know that I can fully answer the why. I think we were waiting to make sure we had the hire, and then I think the, we wait for children to select the Spanish and French also. So I think it was sort of the, there's the kind of a master plan of scheduling, and then there's kind of the more refined process of planning.
How many sections do we normally have for Spanish? I know she has instruction of four sections.
Right.
Is that the typical?
So there's probably another six, I'm thinking, yeah.
Elizabeth, it's a full schedule.
Yeah.
It also teaches a global culture for sixth grades.
So overall, about 10?
Nine or 10.
I'm just thinking, could we have anticipated our need earlier, you know, to hindsight, but...
Right. Yeah.
You say here, the class size is nearer to the average of 26. What exactly is nearer?
So essentially, our policy reads it as a target. So I, and again, we haven't finished all of our advanced ELA and advanced math determinations, as well as new students that might move in. But right now, the way the schedule's set up is, there would be many, many classes that really hit that 26. There might be some that have 24 students, but really that, going to that target, and not, I think we're even, the board, I think it was a little bit uncomfortable last school year, was when we had 30 in 32.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Is the nearer, like, are we nearer from going from like 40 to 35, or?
The content area, I think was where we're at.
Could you talk more about that? Are we talking more to help the math and science classes with their numbers, or is this a Spanish class number issue?
This really helps, this really balances out...
It's a little unclear there.
Yeah. So what I understand, and again, I'm not the one sorting out the master schedule, but in talking to April, and I talked to her just, you know, late last week, was that this, by creating, and again, it's really more to that science-math combination, so it's really kind of an increase in the math, rather than coming and asking for a half-time math teacher. The math classes were the classes last year, or this past school year, that got quite large, and some of the advanced ELA classes also, right?
We were over 30 in a few sections this year. So far, no section from the way she's initiating the schedule configuration is over 30. The largest sitting class at the moment is 29, and that's scheduling. That's the advanced, one of the advanced classes, as it's looking at the moment based on the majors, but we have some additional things we're still doing.
Well, and those of you that are new, there was a matrix change last summer. So those advanced classes expanded their reach, and so that's why those numbers went up, due to the administrative choices for the matrix.
Yeah, it's going to be a seventh to eighth grade issue, is what we're trying to resolve. The sixth grade class coming up looks a little different.
Because I guess, I was going to use... Could you maybe increase it to, like, I'm sure you've done a number analysis, but increasing it from maybe .25 to maybe .75?
Oh, for the position?
Right.
To make it a more higher, potentially a more attractive?
More attractive, possibly then get it even closer to our benchmark, I mean, and then...
I mean, that's an interesting question, and we were making recommendations, what we really asked April and Kristy to do as well, is to sort of say like, what, you know, what do you need? It's sort of a given. I do know at times, sometimes positions get sort of rounded out. Sometimes people are asked to then help with like interventions or other support services, that kind of thing. I don't know that a .75 would be more higher, more easy to hire than a .52. And the .52, the reason it kind of gets to this slightly odd sort of number is that it's teaching four sections, and then there's a required number of planning minutes because of the contractual agreement. So Donna McLaughlin, our HR specialist, calculated that.
So this is an additional FTE compared to last year?
Right. Overall, Hauser staff, overall, right, there's been some...
Do we, that's what I want to know, was there an overall net, or is this an overall?
This is the overall .52 FTE of, given all the Hauser staff, there've been some replacements based on retirements and resignations, but this becomes, and that's why it really comes uniquely to the board for approval, is otherwise, those positions that were just, that have been vacated, we're hiring, making recommendations for new people, this really becomes a whole new position.
Just in a more general sense, like, you said the biggest classes was rolling off this year, and we're going to lose a net maybe 40 or 50 kids, basically, out of Hauser, which is 7% or 8%, assuming there's no huge influx over the summer. And then in the next two years, two other very big classes are going to be rolling off. So Hauser over the next couple of years is going to lose 100 kids, I mean, unless something, you know, is a massive influx, which is a big percentage change. So are you anticipating that because of this large drop in the number of students, which we've sort of been hiring people over the last number of years because the number of students has been going up, are you anticipating that as the number of students drops, we're going to be reducing the number of positions through time? Is that, is that more a general question?
Right, I think it's something we'll have to analyze each year, and we'll have to analyze each year even in, you know, the January, February timeframe, because that's when we would potentially do a reduction in force. It is interesting, you know, the advanced ELA that kind of opened the door a little wider, that was intentionally done and on purpose, and I think there's a sense, I know the whole Quest audit is looking at, committee is looking at that process, you know, the offerings of the foreign language, the additional supports and services and intervention, so that's, you know, we've had conversations where our staff has expanded, not always because of student enrollment, but because of some of the specialization of services that we've chosen to offer also.
I want to clarify, just to need to have a talk, though, after rates of expenses increasing, that we make sure we're cognizant of our hires. And I know we do a very careful job, but, you know, adding positions is something we need to take very seriously.
Absolutely, and that's why this, and that again, is sort of speaks to why it's a .52, and not a, gosh, it'd be nice to just go up to one and make it an easier-to-hire position. So this was really, sort of, for lack of a better term, kind of that close-to-the-bone analysis of like, what do I need to not come forward with class sizes of 30 and 32, which we asked the principal very specifically last September to not present us with that again this year.
And the matrix increase, just to clarify for the advanced, the matrix didn't change drastically, except that a placement test was added at the middle school. What happened was, students weren't being looked at annually. They were getting in in sixth grade, and it was that once and done. There wasn't a relook. And so when we relooked and actually looked at students on an annual basis, it increased the class. That's where those eight additional students came from in that eighth-grade year. The class sizes were around 27, 28, just under that 30 mark, and then we added eight, and they went to 32 and 33, somewhere in there. So that was a piece of it as well. And there's decisions to be made. When we're looking at the current students that are qualifying in sixth grade right now, if I told you today, without doing any further analysis of some of the students that are higher achieving, there are 29 students total in sixth grade for advanced math, which is just one section, unless you want sections of 14 and 15, right? So that threshold of where those numbers fluctuate...
We had one section this year already.
Correct, we had two this year in sixth grade, but this, next year, there will be one. But that will take the class sizes down where they were at 29, closer to 29 and 30 in some of the... twenty-nine and thirty in some of the general ed sections in seventh. So the way she reconfigured, she's really trying to be cognizant of being fiscally responsible, and also still paying attention to the class size guidelines where we were uncomfortable before.
So do you have any other questions or comments about the Spanish teacher recommendation to hire point-five-two FTE? Do people feel comfortable about sort of violating our agreement, our policy, not policy, but just kind of our operating agreement to go ahead and vote on this tonight to approve it so that the administration can actually find someone? Are we comfortable with that, sort of?
I am.
Is there any kind of ballpark idea in terms of the financial implications of this?
What does a PTE cap cost?
So David, an average teacher salary with benefits, I want to say, I want to say, like, I'm gonna throw out like fifty with the, you know, fifty thousand annual, and I'm thinking like, that's average plus benefits. I don't know, we've talked, you have a different number for me?
Would there be benefits with this position?
Actually, there wouldn't be benefits with a half-time position, right?
Sixty, I would, because of benefits, depends on what, what plan he's signed up for.
Right, for a full-time, full-time FTE with benefits, or saying half-time, half, half of that, or point-five-two percent of that?
We don't know the longevity of the position, I think that's the difficult part.
Right, right, if, you know, a brand-new graduate-
Because we do expect, as we've talked, you know, that the number of positions that we have need to reflect the number of students that we have, so we need to be very careful about, you know, if we lost a bunch of eighth graders who were taking Spanish or whatever, that we make sure we adjust. So I think that's what I'm having trouble with right now.
Do we have, do we have more than one Spanish teacher then?
This would be, so we have one full-time Spanish teacher, and then she would be an additional, this, not necessarily, this person would be that additional, so you'd have that one and a half, one and point-five-two.
We get more students taking Spanish upfront, and the eighth graders leaving this year don't really affect the Spanish thing, because-
No, this Olympia.
Last year's sixth grade class doesn't take Spanish, so it was the seventh, so the sixth grade that's moving up is just as large as the eighth grade leaving, so, so the Spanish need is the same. Next year, it'll be different, because the, the current class coming into sixth is a little smaller, and then we-
But they have less math students.
This year, so there's a balance, you know, it's-
Right, they're two separate questions.
It's two separate questions, but it's affected by the same person that left.
The overall trend should not be always up, if the number of students are down.
That's right.
Right, but I also don't like the idea of having thirty, thirty-two kids in a class, you know, like, I, I would personally prefer to keep the amount of teachers if we're lowering the class size to a more reasonable, you know, I mean, I'm not saying moving forward fibers, I'm saying right now.
Right, but I think that was, that was sort of court because of the way things play out, I don't think that had to be that way. And the average classroom, the average math-
No, right, right, right.
Two kids, so just how, how these are distributed.
Right, there's the averaging, and then there's the sectioning, and, and those two factors have to play together to determine the right number of FTE.
Yeah, I think it does become complicated with the instrumental music factor and what other courses students elect, it's not so cut and dry that you can just free arrange it and make it all pretty.
It's encore choices, foreign language choices, whether you're in band or orchestra, yeah, yeah, advanced, yeah.
So, does that, would people feel comfortable then, sort of voting on this item? We don't have to vote in favor, we can vote against it, but would people feel comfortable-
And we don't have to vote, and we could wait until the July board meeting, just puts us one month out in terms of the posting.
But in the end, we need a teacher to teach in Spanish, because we currently don't have a teacher that's going to fill four sections of Spanish, correct?
Right.
So if we decide against this, then-
Then they get put in-
We'd add larger classes and they get the-
Right, we would have larger classes.
Yes, Mike, one question I have is how difficult is it, is it to find a half-time teacher?
I think it's difficult to find a high-quality foreign language teacher, and a high-quality foreign language teacher half-time in June or July or August will be a challenge.
And I guess, sort of, which leads to my next question, is, what if, is there, what if it comes August and we don't, can't find that teacher, do we go then to a full-time, or do we just let this position go? And I guess that's sort of my question, is like, how do we approach this if we can't find a qualified candidate?
So we have some teachers that are duly credentialed, I believe, I'm looking more to Merrill, who may have some, so you were mentioning a, a teacher, not to name, but we have some other teachers that perhaps could teach a foreign language, but they're already teaching, let's say, ELA or something else. Could somebody else teach something else, and would we have better luck finding a part-time? You know, so we would, we would, we would post for this, because this is sort of this unique position. I mean, the other, the other reality is sometimes late in the summer, and I'm not saying they're not high-quality, but you sometimes find a newer graduate who has, you know, maybe hasn't had that opportunity to get their foot in the door, and they can be wonderful.
Sometimes I'm interested in a lady who doesn't want to go back for the time to her old teacher. We do have an ELA teacher that has a Spanish certification, but would prefer to teach ELA, but we could-
It has a full caseload, it has a full class roster, yeah.
Has a full ELA class schedule, but we could force an internal transfer.
Right. And then post for the part, point-five-two, we're just, yeah.
But that teacher would become part of ELA, but Spanish, we would post for a part-time ELA.
So I think there's a compelling case to, to actually vote on this item, even though we have not talked about it before, so therefore I'm going to propose that we have the motion, and if the motion is sort of seconded, that we vote, and you don't, people do not feel obligated to vote a certain way, but I think we should just, you know, sort of move on here. So is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the point-five-two FTE Spanish teacher position as presented?
I'll move.
Any further discussion? If not, Margie, please go first.
Mr. Barasati?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol? Ms. Kleiber? Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next up, two stipend proposals for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. I believe the stipends all went up by, the contractually negotiated one-point-two percent.
Right.
And you had a handful of additional stipends, maybe you'd like to, to, to talk about a little bit?
Sure, so per our agreement with the Riverside Education Council, there is a, a term in the, in the contract where teachers who are just going to continue to provide the same co-curriculars or other stipended services continue on. They, if somebody resigns from a stipend position, it can be replaced, but there's actually a, a part of the contract that says new stipend proposals need to be brought to the administration by June fifteenth, and then to the board for consideration. So if you scroll all the way down, and they should show up as blue on your attachment there, there are actually additions, additional stipend proposals, and I want you to see kind of the full dollar amount in all the stipends that are already agreed to in the contract as part of this, and as part of this consideration, is that the new proposal for a chamber choir in grade seven and eight, the Hollywood Newspaper Club that you actually heard about, it was a, a club, a co-curricular activity that was running without any additional compensation for the, actually, paraprofessional that was running that. Central is proposing starting a running club, it's a club that they have not had before. Ames, an additional STEM-based science club, and then Blithe Parker Garden Club. My understanding is Blithe Park has had a garden club in the past, and this is kind of, again, bringing back a previous club and activity that had been in place before. As you know, Blithe Park also just installed the Illinois Habitat, School Yard Habitat Garden, so they wanted to have a club specifically in the fall and in the spring, children to continue to take care of that garden with the supervision and mentorship of one of our teachers. So you see the, the additional dollar amount. My understanding is, it is not sort of formally in the contract agreement, is that there was an idea of elementaries having about one co-curricular per building, and that was really just with this idea that, I think, the board perhaps, and the administration didn't want to sort of be flooded with many, many requests. Quite honestly, these are the requests we received. We did not trim back and say, wow, we had four from Ames, or four from Central, we can't possibly bring that many forward. These were really the teachers and paraprofessionals that brought forward these different ideas. You can tell when you look at this, and I think this is typical, is the middle school has many more. So that's just, again, that's, I think, been part of kind of our history and programming and services, that, we talked about that when we met, and talked about co-curriculars several months ago, is that I think it's a way that the Hauser programming is really enriched, and our teachers have opportunities to provide some kind of unique opportunities that are based around sort of those special interests, passions, clubs, activity ideas that really engage students in the, the overall school environment.
So it's a newspaper proposal?
Oh, go ahead.
Just, it's a newspaper club, a central, a running club, a STEM club at Ames, and a garden club at Blithe, and it's altogether, it looks like it's come, come to about, are the three and a half thousand dollars on top of the two hundred thousand dollars we spent on stipends?
It's the chamber choir also.
And the chamber choir, sorry.
Sometimes we have one person.
Yeah, I'm asking what just clarified, one person for that, yeah. So my question isn't specific to those at all, my question is just about, like, so if you look at before-school supervision on the first page, you know, there are multiple of those. Are we anticipating the same amount of, I mean, because it says the, the price per stipend, but then the actual cost is much more, because there's, I don't, what is that? What's the amount there?
Right.
X amount, so are we, you know, for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we just have the cost per stipend, but we don't have an idea of-
That actual-
The actual amount.
So, that before and after-school supervision, and that's been part of the contract, I think, for-
Yeah, which is a very important one, I'm certainly not saying I'm just curious.
But that is based on an actual, the number, and I don't know, and I, I have not heard anything that would make me think that that number's going higher, that I think there's kind of a structure and a formal agreement around how many people are supervising outside before-school, after-school, that anticipating that those, that that quantity, that that unit, that they're staying the same. The one that changes is the, the mentoring, right? So the mentoring is based, that's for our new teachers, that's just near the bottom of page three, we have talked about a mentor, a beginning teacher mentor, an experienced teacher mentor. That unit or that, you know, that number of people, that'll be based on the number of new teachers that we have this year.
Right, right.
That number is-
Try to double up to where we can, and they don't get double this thing, then-
Right, 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 right.
But they'll take on two teachers.
Two teachers, yeah. But in those places where it's been kind of multiple units of, I anticipate those staying the same.
Okay, that's, that was my only question, because while we have the actual for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we don't really have an actual for, obviously, a projected act for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, based on-
That's something we could ask for.
Right, could we, could we maybe get an estimate next time?
Say the estimate of which part?
Of projected, you know, to make sure-
Yeah, so, so next time around, we would have the act, you know-
I see another column.
Per stipend, the number of stipends per, you know, just to, I mean, obviously, it's a one-by-two percent increase, you can kind of just, I can infer what the projected increase is gonna be, but-
And I think, the other just sort of minor detail, interesting example, so the Hollywood Newspaper Club was actually run during lunchtime, a paraprofessional has some lunchtime supervision responsibilities. She was actually doing that during her lunchtime supervision, Kim was able to work it out at Hollywood School, that she didn't need to supervise children, she could really run the newspaper club. If she continues to do it that way, she wouldn't be paid the stipend, but there is some conversation about it becoming an after-school activity, and then in which case she would get the stipend.
Any other questions or comments about the stipends?
And this again is a, kind of for discussion for your review, and following our rules around sort of new business, or operating rules, new business, old business, then we would bring it back to the July board meeting as an action item. Because the contract does specifically say the board approves, approves this one.
After no further questions about the stipend schedule, then the next item is a Ladsy special education overview.
And I'm gonna ask Pam to comment, so this was one of the questions, and I, I feel like this sort of continues to be just a discussion item, an important item for just board information around, of our special education staff and staffing, who's, who are Ladsy people, who are District ninety-six people, and then we also talked about a, sort of relatively minor reduction in the overall FTE, kind of speaking to the FTE conversation and personnel conversation we just had, like to be able to point out when we're, you know, being able to make those reductions, and I know that's, sometimes that's, that's great news, and then sometimes we have new students move in that we don't anticipate, and that number can, can change again. But right now, this is, I wanted Pam to share that, how things look right now.
So in your board packet, this was a proposed staffing that we looked at for special education and students with IEPs, based upon student needs of their related services, and the minutes of services, and the minutes of special education teacher time. So you can see at the bottom, overall, for this next coming school year, we've decreased by three-point-one-five FTE in our positions for teachers, related service providers, and paraprofessionals. And I have the increase and decrease, some staff removed to adjust where increases were needed, and there were decreases. The Ladsy staff that we contracted with Ladsy from are in blue, and that is remaining the same with the bit of a decrease in psychologists from Ladsy that we have. The Ladsy FTE for OT and PT, that is determined by Ladsy, they take a look at the minutes with the OTs and PT to determine exactly how many minutes are needed at each building to meet student needs. On the second page, there had been questions in the past regarding, a number of years ago, right before I came, there was suggested increase in hiring more school staff and psychologists and social workers, and so I did some digging, looking at what that looked like in the past, and you can see, at one point, we just had the one psychologist from Ladsy. We did have three of our own social workers, but had two-point-oh FTE for social workers that were hired from Ladsy. And in making the changes in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, the new staff, actual new staff that was added was three psychologists. The social worker positions actually were some replacements. The district is already paying Ladsy FTE for the elementary social worker at Blithe and Hollywood, and rather than paying Ladsy, then hired a social worker to be a district employee. And then the other change was, we continued with, at Hauser, one district social worker, a social worker that we have from Ladsy, continued with that. But then we also added an additional social worker from Ladsy, but that person replaced the counselor that was previously at the junior high. So previously at Hauser, in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, there were two social workers and one counselor, and it was determined at that time to move to three social workers and not have a counselor. So the actual additional FTE was the three psychologists, everything else was replacements.
So I think it's very interesting, I'm glad you put this together. Just, I wasn't following the board at this time, but what, we, it sounds like in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, there was just a point-eight psychologist from Ladsy, and the district had none on staff itself.
Right.
And the next year, we hired three psychologists on staff, and, but still kept the Ladsy psychologists, so it's like a huge increase, like, what, what was the motivation for that?
Right, the difference in that increase has to do with the, the amount of FTE that we had for psychologists at that time was basically based on the, the model of a psychologist who evaluates tests, reports, and leaves. And in looking at MTSS, RTI MTSS, the role of the psychologist over the past ten years has taken on a very different role, where they are reviewing data with teachers, helping to prove instruction, helping to look at those tiers, and the psychologist is no longer the person who evaluates, evaluates and leaves. They are there in the trenches all the time, reviewing student data, working with the interventionists, as well as the special education teachers. So it's not just a special education initiative, it's more of a general education initiative as well, too, and the role of psychologists has changed over the years. And they also can prefer, you know, they do some counseling, they work with students directly as well.
Might help with behavior intervention.
Yes.
It's, it's, yeah, I mean, Pam said it well, a much more integral part of the overall staff, and you said, it's in your notes, but you said, just in doing some digging, and that was really, that was shared with me even by the Ladsy executive director when I started here this past summer, was that that was really a very kind of local decision to, to be able to provide a different level of service to students in the district.
It's my understanding at that time, too, that, at that time it was called RTI, not MTSS, but that it was at a very, very basic and, and not at appropriate level, and it was thought that the resources were needed to bring it to where it needs to be.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about the staffing information that Ms. Shaw shared with us? If there are no questions, then thanks very much, Ms. Shaw. We next move to the last item, which is the end-of-year highlights and accomplishments.
So realized here in June that we didn't want the year to end with, we had identified district goals, we kind of identified them as board goals, district goals, they really all kind of fit within the strategic plan. We were at the IASB workshop, they talked about kind of the concept of the nesting bowls, and this was, didn't really want the year to end without just taking a few minutes to kind of run through, and I can certainly do this relatively quickly, but really the accomplishments of, of this Board of Education, of this district in general, and thanks to Jason Smith for helping me format this, but this is something, I think, for the board to kind of give me feedback over time. And even when we have kind of a, more of a conversational retreat opportunity to look at how do we want to continue to measure our progress. But here's one way that we're going to do it today, by looking at our areas of strategic focus. So thank you, Don, for clicking us, clicking us through this. And that's going to be very hard to read, I realize. You have, all have a copy in your board book as well. But I don't need to go through and read all of them. But a couple of things that really jump out to me as highlights, it was just the, you know, K-5 implementation of bath and focus. It is never a small deal for, you know, K-5, all grade levels, to implement a new curriculum resource, new curriculum tool, and to really do that with a really strong amount of professional development and leadership from Merrill and from our principals. But to really do it in a way that I think it made great sense for children also. And then continuing at the, sort of all at the same time and in the same breath, looking at English Language Arts curriculum resources and making a decision here at the end of the school year to move into new English Language Arts materials. And again, sort of a thank you and a huge acknowledgement to the board for understanding kind of the process steps and the recommendations that came from our teachers. The other one is the ongoing work of the Quest and Advanced Learning Committee that is kind of digging in deep and looking at research and best practices and the needs of District 96 specifically. And we'll continue to do that work on into the next school year and we'll continue to keep the board apprised of all that. Some new work with social studies and again, another curriculum adoption area, and that was the iQuest, the science for our middle school science teachers, the STEAM program. And again, these are things that I inherited, that was work all kind of well underway. But the STEAM program is really, was a new program. And thanks to Bob for a really nice article in The Landmark not that long ago, but highlighting a really, I think, exciting encore opportunity for many of our students. Pam had just talked about MTSS and RTI. That's a process that continues to get refined and revised over time in the way that makes most sense for children. And five-year compliance review to the board had already heard about. And again, sort of our continued partnership with our West Suburban Consortium for Academic Excellence and some of those things that were noticed and perhaps even go unnoticed in some ways. But we had lots of children, as you all know from the board salute, to participating in new maths testing and our exciting art expo and Brookfield Zoo Science Fair and a civic action weekend that we had. I forget Merrill how many kids, but? So for our district, a nice, a nice number of children that participated in that. So we speak about kind of the curriculum and assessments, but also the whole child. And I, as I look at that, I think of a lot of great things that went on and really, really great things that went on for our students. The area of the exploring the possibility of a K-8 foreign language was kind of intentionally something that kind of felt like sort of a next step goal in terms of the strategic plan, but starting to, again, really think about that process and what was needed. So looking at what other WSCAE Academic Excellence, so that's a group of 15 school districts in the West Suburban Communities that have some similarities and some commonalities as kind of comparable districts. So looking to them in terms of what was going on with foreign language programming, reaching out specifically to members that had been on a committee. So for, maybe for everybody on the board, I think some of you are even more aware than I am that there was a, looks like a pretty rigorous, thoughtful process that went on in 2013, 2014, a committee of parents and educators and administrators that came together to really look at world language instruction in District 96. And for a variety of reasons, that recommendation, that process really didn't move forward, but kind of wanted to reach out to people that had been on that committee to understand a bit more about our history and some of the intentions that had been there with that. So it was kind of revisiting and investigating and doing some research. We met directly with Riverside Brookfield High School to understand what impact if we were to shift and change our foreign language instruction, what might that or not have on high school trajectory and articulation with the high school. And then also looked at Brookfield and Oak Park District 97 specifically around some of the programming they had done in that area. So there, that is definitely a to-be-continued area for us in terms of the strategic plan and that strategic plan goal. And kind of intentionally, the common core alignment and ELA and math went sort of, went before, went first on that, but don't want to lose sight of that other really important goal. The other key area is culture and climate. And again, that focus on full child. And again, as Sherry mentioned, just at the June 7th board meeting, we heard a lot more about the PBSS initiative. That's really just kind of a year, year two, year two in implementation.
Yeah, year one in all-school implementation, year two for pilot schools.
Okay. Work of the Wellness Committee and Pam Shaw heads that up. And looking at our co-curricular opportunities for students, you just heard more about that as we looked at the stipends. Looking at the partnership with Riverside Parks and Rec. Did some nice after-school programming at Central and at Ames and anticipated some planning at Hollywood and Blithe. And then deciding to do the pilot before and after-school program at Central for the before and after-care specifically. We brought together community members and staff members to look at the annual review of our strategic plan year one with an idea that we'll continue to do that as we move into next year as well. Bringing student presenters to our board meeting was kind of an intentional opportunity for all of you to get a picture of what our students are up to, but also how that really impacts. And I think it's interesting, we didn't, we didn't designate or ask or request that principals bring forward certain groups of students or with certain kind of areas of interest. But I think it really spoke to a lot of the work happening around the whole child here in District 96. So that was, I think, a nice opportunity. The board salute, as Sherry had mentioned, over 200 students receiving awards and recognition. And again, I think really speaks to the many different opportunities our students have. We did a parent information night with Carrie Goldman around social conflict and bullying. Somebody in response to that being some, there being some concerns about some of that in our buildings. But also, that was an opportunity to really work with the parent leadership team in partnership and doing some work that felt important to all of us. You all heard about Sarah Zinn as a partnership that's going to get integrated into our middle school health curriculum around kind of relationship balance. And again, with that anti-bullying, safe school environment lens. You had some other just awards and recognitions that you've already heard about, just Pam Shaw really getting recognition for our blended preschool opportunities. The Illinois School Yard Habitat grant going to Blithe Park. And then having a spring cross-country team for the first time. And I had an opportunity to meet with the other superintendents in our sports conference. And there was kind of a really shared idea that here was a co-ed, non-cut sport, a sport that sometimes other children just haven't had an opportunity to kind of try. And that idea that a lot of children are out there, they're willing to kind of go and run. And again, the relationship building and confidence building that came with all of that. I think people felt that that was, that there were good options that were coming out of that. So also continuing just to work on, and there's a list there of just different things working on in the area of communications, that that was an area that I felt coming in as a new superintendent a year ago, that there were things that, just from sort of a district office lens, that you had already, were well on your way, had published the first annual report. We think maybe the first annual report in maybe about 10 years. So we have a 2017, 2016, 2017 annual report that will be coming out here in the summer as soon as we figure out our bulk mailing rules and guidelines on that. But that'll be coming out soon. So that also has felt like we got some very nice feedback around just community members saying that this was nice information about what's, the good things going on in the school district. So I've really enjoyed working with the parent leadership team. That was again, something I inherited. But I think all of those opportunities, we had a first annual, annual safety meeting with Riverside, North Riverside, and Brookfield Police and Fire and agree that that's something that should be part of an annual process for all of us. But again, I think people felt that that was another way of looking at the importance of student safety and communications and all of that. So again, I kind of found, found these different indicators of some of the work, again, that, again, the board and the district had done over the course of the year by looking at sort of some of our monthly communications and even weekly communications. And in finance and facilities, or facilities specifically, we know that's an area that a lot of work will, will come as we move forward. But specifically this school year, it was, it was just in July, August, perhaps September by the time the sale closed, right? Purchased the property next to Ames School at 92 Repton Road. There had also been paving projects at Central Hauser and Hollywood, the Blithe Park window replacement, which again, that all seems like ancient history perhaps, but I know those were all really important and key items to get up and off the ground and happen and have really created some nice facilities improvements. We worked with an architecture firm, hired a new architecture firm, but completed our 10-year health, life, safety agreement. That had been something on the board's kind of, I think, to-do list for a while. Have started out the facilities advisory committee to look at a long-range master facility plan for District 96. And again, and maybe no particular order, the elevator installation at Hauser was also, I know, a big accomplishment of this board. So continuing to work, and I know we had really hoped to get to kind of outdoor learning and playground spaces, a goal this year. And I think as we started to look at master facility planning and realizing that a lot of the work, we needed to understand where we were going sort of facility-wide before we started upgrading playgrounds, wanting to make sure that we weren't creating work that then we might change or undo or redo later. So again, I think, I know this board still has a very strong commitment to really improving and looking at outdoor learning and playgrounds. And I'm confident that that'll be embedded as part of the long-range master facility plan. So our finance goals, and I'll continue to move quickly here, just maintaining the district's solid fiscal position and prioritizing our spending to align with our strategic goals. So I know we're saying goodbye to David Sellers, but David has done an excellent job of assuring that we have operated in that solid fiscal position. And again, and I know your three years here, David, there were a lot of kind of changes. You mentioned even just the changes in the audit and some negative findings that have been improved upon. And, you know, hopefully the board feels also just a sort of clear communication and an understanding of our budgeting process and tax levy and where, you know, kind of how we are progressing relative to the budget month by month and over time. So again, lots of information there. And again, an opportunity to say thank you to David one last time, too. So thank you. And then last but not least, our other big goal area was human relations and the idea of recruiting, developing, and evaluating quality staff. And I would say the biggest area in all of that was the high-quality professional development. And Merrill's brought just a great amount of leadership in this area. But when I think of all the things, and we talked about the curricular areas, but also for our teachers to have adopted the Danielson framework and student learning objectives and our opportunity for our principals and also to look at evaluating teachers in what ways the Danielson framework really talks about what makes an effective teacher. That that's really a, kind of changes the way, the way we evaluate teaching, as we say, but to do in a way that's really meaningful and doesn't feel punitive, doesn't feel like a gotcha, really feels like this process of continuous improvement and growth. So that is huge. Recruiting, it's interesting, we've talked about, this is not something we delved into this year, but I know there's been some conversation about attending job fairs, that kind of thing, particularly perhaps in these hard-to-fill areas. We do know that District 96 is an attractive school community for people to come for employment. So it's not that we need to beat the bushes, so to speak, to get people to apply for positions. We have many, many applicants. But making sure that we have ways to assure that we find our highest quality candidates for these positions is an ongoing goal. Making sure that we have the collaborative time and opportunities for our teachers to work together to continue to hone their skills and build their skills, learning from professional development providers, but also the opportunity to learn from each other. And so our 90-minute PD sessions, our six 90-minute PDs have been, I think, a really valuable opportunity for grade levels and particularly with Hollywood and Blithe that are, you know, single-section schools, for those grade-level teachers to have a regular team that's really made up of it. Their district-wide team, I think, has been really, really valuable also. So you just heard back in June about our update on para-implementation. So the idea of common assessments and looking at student growth and student learning overall and focus on professional practices. And again, that is, I know perhaps Bill Howes and Merrill made it sound kind of easy, but it's not, it wasn't, that it's really a collaborative relationship. It's shared decision-making and it's really shared decision-making around some key ideas and clear goals. So I know that was kind of threw it all out there, but I wanted to take enough, take time for the board to kind of be able to maybe take a breath, have a moment of reflection and just say, wow, I think a lot happened this year. So thank you all very much.
Thanks for that very detailed overview. And you had a lot to do with a lot of those initiatives.
The team did, it was a good teamwork.
It was great.
We talked about boardroom to classroom. And I, when I think about these things, it really, it really felt like that in a, in a really valuable way. So thank you.
Will this update be on the website for community members?
We could do that.
I think it would be, I personally, I don't know what the other board members think. I think it's, it's great.
Sure, yeah, in particular, we had the, you know, the, a lot of these goals came from the public. So it's a good response back to them.
I think it's a really nice way of?
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Highlighting the year.
When we all talked about what was important to us. Putting stickers on what we valued and?
Maybe you could put a link to that document on, in the annual report.
Yeah.
And put a link on the website.
And we might be too late because that may already be off to the printer.
Okay. That's all right.
Someone had mentioned probably QR codes into the annual report so that you could link to other areas. But I know it links us to the website, so.
All right, well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any comments about this last item? If not, are there any public comments? If there are no public comments, then the future meeting dates are the July 5th. Maybe the whole meeting has been canceled. The next meeting is July 19th. At the public meeting will start at 7:00 PM. The August 2nd meeting, Community of the Whole, has been canceled. And then the next meeting after that is August 16th at 6:30 at Hauser. So if there are no other items, then the meeting is adjourned.